6:31 PM. Please rise. And the clerk will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I was so excited. Okay, can I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education approves the consent agenda?
Can we do agenda first?
And may I have a motion and a second that the board, that the agenda for May 28th, 2024 be approved as submitted?
So moved.
Thank you. May I please have a motion and a second that the treasurer's report, including the cash report, general fund cash report, the general fund revenue status report, general fund budget status report, school lunch fund cash report, and school lunch fund revenue and expense budget report for the month ending March 31st, 2024 be approved?
Second.
Okay, board members, all those in favor? All in favor and not opposed? All right, special reports.
We have one special report this evening, and it is our annual meeting where we've invited our Team 1511, Rolling Thunder, also known as Robotics, to the board meeting to present on your year and how things are going. So I, we have your slides uploaded in, the clicker is on the table, and I'll turn it over to Robotics.
All right, is this working?
It is.
Wonderful. Uh, next slide?
Uh, yeah. There we go.
All right, hello, and thank you for inviting us to this Board of Education meeting. My name is Nadia, and I am the, this past year's captain of 1511 Rolling Thunder.
I'm Liam, and I help develop media for the team, such as PowerPoints and videos.
I'm Colston, and I was on drive team for this past year.
Hi, I'm Hannah, I'm the newly elected team captain.
Hi, I'm Larkin, and just being on leadership, I was scouting lead this past year.
Our mission is to transform our culture to value STEAM by creating student leaders, starting and sustaining teams, and ensuring access for everyone. All 42 of our active students have opportunities to become leaders by organizing events, fundraisers, and even traveling across the country. Our 33 mentors and three teachers help manage the team and help students learn new skills.
This past season, we competed at both Finger Lakes Regional at RIT and Tech Valley Regional at Albany. At both competitions, we were selected for an alliance, which is a group of three teams that compete together throughout elimination matches. Additionally, at Tech Valley, we won the imagery award, which recognizes integration of aesthetics and cohesion into team, into team image and robot image.
This year, we didn't qualify for champs, but a few students from our team went to champs to give a conference on student leadership and also host our annual all-rookie meet and greet, where we invite rookie teams to meet up and also have a scavenger hunt.
As a robotics team, our students develop lots of technical skills. Throughout the process of robot design during build season, students work together to efficiently and effectively solve the problems they encounter. In doing so, students are given the opportunity to utilize and hone the skills that school equips them with.
First is more than robots. There are tons of different aspects to running a functional team, including marketing, essay writing, graphic design, and leadership. Our team has students that create advertisements, videos, team gear, and more, which all play crucial roles in interacting with our community and winning awards. Our leadership team is a group of elected individuals that manage events, team structure, and communicate with the team. Our team manages to provide a role that fits the interests of everyone.
Our team is organized through sub-teams, each of which specializes in a different area which is instrumental to the function of our team. Sub-teams allow students to pursue opportunities that are better suited to their individual interests. The skills gained during preseason sub-team meetings aid them later on during build season. During build season, sub-teams change year to year based off what the game is and what mechanical mechanisms are required to complete the tasks given. Students are allowed to join as many sub-teams as they wish.
Our team works to cultivate the FIRST program in the district. Through our efforts, we've ensured that every single elementary school in Penfield has a FIRST LEGO League team, and that all levels of FIRST are present within Penfield. Our team also hosts the qualifier competitions for FLL and FTC. This is so FIRST teams can compete at a local competition. To further encourage children in our community to get involved with FIRST, we also run FLL summer camps, where we teach children how to program LEGO robots and do fun team building activities with them. Last summer, we renovated the curriculum, creating a more enriching experience for the children.
FIRST within the community is a big focus of ours, but we also support and host various other STEAM education events or robot demonstrations within all of the Penfield schools. On this slide, we have a few examples of events we run within the district. Our team is also heavily involved in STEAM advocacy. We are currently working on educating in New York State government for bills A3445A and S1576B, which if passed will allocate grants to start and sustain FIRST teams in Title I schools in New York. We also run the New York advocacy conference, where members from the Student Association for STEM advocacy and members of our team present about advocacy to teams throughout New York. And for the past 10 years, we have attended the National Advocacy Conference, which is an event where teams across the US come to DC to help learn about advocacy and meet with political representatives. In 2022, our team's STEAM advocacy led to November 8th being declared as statewide New York State STEAM Day. And every STEAM Day since, our team has run an event to celebrate this.
After four years of lobbying for STEAM Day, we built on our success by creating a district-wide STEAM Week. This year, 1511 students went to every elementary school and gave a 30-minute presentation and robot demonstration to all of the kids in each building. We also assembled, or packaged and distributed over 2,000 STEAM kits to all of the elementary schoolers in the district. At the end of STEAM Week, we also had a robot demonstration and fundraiser at the Webster-Barnes &amp; Noble, where kids from all over Rochester came to visit us. While there are tons of events that we run within Penfield schools, we also have events all over Rochester. Our major recurring events are Books and Bots at our Penfield Public Library and at the Webster-Barnes &amp; Noble, and our Girl Scout Badge Nights. Last week, we actually hosted a troop from Cobles and helped them get all three of their robotics badges. New this year is our partnership with the Rochester Museum and Science Center, where we ran robot demonstrations at their STEM Saturdays over the summer and at their solar eclipse event. For the past four years, we've also been a giving partner with Bombas Socks, which is a huge honor for us and has helped us build valuable relationships with local organizations such as Pines of Parentin and Cameron Community Ministries.
We also have some larger, reoccurring events. For other high school teams, we run an off-season Halloween event called Ra-Cha-Cha-Ruckus, where teams as far as Canada can train new students and drive teams. We also have a build season practice competition called Rally, where several teams come to the high school and practice and test their new robots for the coming season. This year, we expanded it into a week-long event for our 20th anniversary. Finally, we have our signature event, the Grateful Red Music Festival, a concert held at the Penfield Amphitheater with local bands, food trucks, and several STEAM activities for kids. These larger events help keep our community engaged, both inside and out of FIRST.
Our team sustains itself through fundraisers and sponsors we get through our Patreon Drive. Our notable fundraisers are the Grateful Red Music Festival, which also functions as a charity event for a different nonprofit every year, and Trivia Night. Trivia Night is a trivia game that we host for our school to participate in every year. And now, Patreon Drive is an annual effort where we teach our students communication skills, so that they can then go out and talk to local businesses to find potential sponsors. It's a lot of work to do all this fundraising, but it keeps our team running and inclusive to all students. We are always looking for more sponsors.
1511 has a very long history. In fact, we've been around for 20 years, ever since the 2004-2005 season. Through all that time, L3 Harris has been our primary sponsor, providing funds and mentors every year. I also want to say a thank you to all of you, as well as the Penfield Central School District community, for providing your continued support over all these years, as well as a thank you to our teachers, Mr. Pizzo, Mr. Levine, Mr. Weisbrode, and our team leader, Larry Lewis.
1511 has done a lot to support the FIRST program, expand STEAM access, and cultivate a multitude of skills for our students in Penfield. But in order to continue doing these amazing things for our community, we need assistance. Costs to run our team have risen due to inflation and increasing material costs and registration costs. We need increased funding to combat these increasing costs. We've also been needing a dedicated practice facility and storage space. Every year, our team builds a mock-up of the entire field so that we can properly practice and test our robot before the real competition. And we've also offered our field to other teams in the area, so they can practice and test their robot during our highly successful event, Super Rally this year. Building, setting up, and tearing down this field is no easy task. It takes no less than two hours to set up and tear down this field. On the time lapse, you can see us putting up the field. Because we borrow the cafeteria space on the weekends for our field, the repetitive setting up and tearing down this field before the weekdays is an extremely strenuous task. Having our own dedicated practice space would completely eliminate the time and effort we pay just to have somewhere to test our robot and let our drivers practice. We hope the board will consider ways that they can help us with these needs.
And now, please direct your attention towards Calla, Trevor, and Yakob, where they will be giving a demonstration of this year's robot.
All right, and I will be explaining what you're all seeing as they demonstrate. So our robot has what's called a swerve drive, which means that it can drive in any direction, anytime. So it can rotate while driving, and it can drive omnidirectional, which is great. So what you just saw is our robot shooting out this orange ring, which is called a note. And the objective of this year's games was to place notes in different areas around the field. We had places where we had to either shoot notes or eject them into like a specific pocket. And as you can see, our robot is very powerful because it has to shoot from a very far distance. Are you okay, Colston?
I'm fine.
That's good to know. Yeah, thankfully, these notes are foam, so they don't hurt very much to be hit with. So our robot intakes the notes from one side and then shoots them out from the other, and we have an arm that's on a pivot to angle where we want the notes to be shot. Beautiful. Oh, yeah. Another component of this game was the hanging. So on the field, there was a swinging chain that our robot had to hang from for points. Unfortunately, our hang mechanism has been in storage for a long time, so it doesn't want to work super well. However, that's what it looks like when it does work. So these are like carbon fiber tubes, and those are hooks that would hang onto the chain to keep the robot from sliding or falling off. And I believe that's all we have. So that concludes our presentation. Thank you all for listening. Do any of you have any questions?
Board members, questions or comments?
I have a question and comment. A great demonstration. My question is, you said it's two hours to set up and tear down. Is that two hours combined? Okay. So what would that do if that was, that time was eliminated for you guys?
Well, a big thing about setting up the field is that it takes away resources from the current effort to build our robot and get it programmed. So if we had all of our students available to be actually working on the robot and on resources for our competitions, that would be really helpful for us. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, so just to make, so that I'm clear, so students have to be taken away from working on like the robots to put the, to construct and deconstruct?
Yeah. Another big thing that that would help with is that it eliminates the extra time required to get the practice space ready. So that's time that could be spent testing the robot and practicing and building the robot, but instead, we have to spend it clearing out the cafeteria, rolling out the carpet, and setting up. Only half the field, to mention, takes an hour to set up. That is half of the components of the field.
Also, I would like to say that because we're borrowing a space for it, we're borrowing the cafeteria space, we're only putting this up on the weekends. So that's another like only time limit, or we only have this field during the weekends. And this is a really important space for especially programmers, and they usually have the least amount of time on our team to get our robot running. So having a consistent, week-long field would be great for us.
Thank you.
I don't have a question, I just have a comment. First of all, I would just like to say, like, it's just very clear that you're a roomful of leaders, which I think is awesome. But more than that, what I really heard from you was something that I don't, I just think is so important, is that you're engaging with the community and you're giving back by going to our elementary classrooms and involving them and exciting them in the work that you're doing and advocating, you know, at the legislative level. I think that's amazing. But even just partnering with our community partnerships that we have, I just think you're a great role model, and not just for the kids in Penfield, but also for many of the adults. So kudos to you for doing that.
I just want to say that this is one of my favorite programs. I'm supposed to be, you know, we're supposed to favor everything equally, but personally, this is one of my favorite programs. And I can say that now, right? This is really something that is unique in that it gives such a range of life skills. And you're doing a lot of stuff now, and you don't, you're just doing it, but you don't realize it. You will know when you get out of here, the skills that it's given you and what you've done. And, you know, this is a very important program for me. I'm really glad that you continue with the advocacy. It's something I think you've really started in the past two or three years. And that's, again, that's, that's really what it takes, you know, we teach people to advocate for themselves, and now you're advocating for yourselves as a group, and you're advocating for yourselves, not just as a group, but also for all your peers and all the other schools to help make the state do more things for you. And you're advocating for space, which of course, we all support as well. But, you know, there's just certain things, we, you know, we work on it, you know, but things take time. Once again, you guys did a great job, and you folks out there did a great job. I always enjoy going to see your competition when it's in RIT. I hope you wish you the best in the future years, and, you know, just keep at it.
Should be able to point out that Mr. Elidge is retiring from the board after the next meeting, and he might be a great mentor, because he's just shared with you publicly how much he loves robotics. He's got all some time on his hands. I'd like to just address, and I appreciate you guys bringing it up, is your teachers and lead mentor you mentioned have also have really strong advocacy skills, because my inbox is usually filled with their asks. The district stands with you in regards to trying to find a space. What's tough is renting space that, you know, in terms of the cost of renting, and then if you rent and you put things into it, the owner of the business can then say, we're done at the end of the year. Purchasing something is more difficult and costly, but we're, we've been continuing to look and work together. And there is a conversation amongst superintendents on the east side about hopefully maybe being able to find a place in a shared space, because ultimately, this has been a problem since I've been at the high school way back, not 20 years, but getting close. The amount of time it takes to set up the playfield in the cafeteria, only to have to tear it down at the end of the night. And, you know, that comparison for other events, it would be imagine if every time you went to go play, I won't pick on a sport, fill in the sport, you had to, you know, mow the lawn yourself, set up all the bases, I gave away a sport. But, you know, just something effective is usually it's, or the classroom teacher has to set up the classroom every day when they go in versus it being set up. So, you know, we stand with you, we're still working through what we might be able to do, and we want to make sure that it's something that lasts, not just a year by year trying to figure it out. So, thank you. And all I would ever share is, you guys mentioned the work you do at the elementary schools, and I've loved Penfield. One of the things I got sold on real quick is the robotics team. I always look at it, wasn't like this when I went to school, but when you guys go to the elementary schools and do the robot demonstrations for their ice cream socials or their events, and I can speak this for the three kids that went through the system and now my kindergartner, you guys are rock stars. Like, it's how, it's how kids look at the Buffalo Bills or the varsity team, like, it is absolute chaos to watch the younger generation want to play with the robot, see you, you can be seen anywhere because of the pants and the skirts. So it's amazing, but you really have an incredible, credible thing going on in Penfield with what you're able to put through it. And I just know the elementary school kids are absolutely, think it's amazing. So you're building your team, whether you know it or not, for those little ones when they grow up. So thanks for all that you do.
Yes, thank you again for coming tonight. It is always nice to see this presentation, and I commend you guys also for all of your hard work, all the time that you put into it, because I know it's a lot of time, and then too, you know, just going and being at different events and your advocacy. It's awesome to see, and it definitely shows, you know, all the work that you've put in. So thank you so much. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
That concludes special reports.
Yes, thank you. All right. Student rep report?
Hello. I unfortunately don't have a robot. Just gonna be me and my little paper today, but I'll think on that.
Yeah, that's perfect.
You've got a year.
In the district, students throughout all of the schools are invited to attend the Penfield High School Black Student Union's Juneteenth Celebration, which will include vocal performances, dance, spoken word, and more. At, at the high school, flag football ended their season as champions for the second year in a row, and AP Chem took a field trip to the University of Rochester to study in their amazing, like universally-known labs. The National Honor Society will be holding a car wash fundraiser on Saturday, and the boys' lacrosse team takes on McQuade tonight in finals. Students participated in a library design committee to give input on student preferences for the new design of the library, whenever that may happen. The junior class council had a barbecue chicken fundraiser in collaboration with Sticky Lips. And Thursday night is the night of vocal music, where seniors who have demonstrated an extraordinary commitment to the choral program can show off their talent. And tonight is convocations, which I learned about half an hour ago that I am part of. So when this is done, I will be jetting out. Sorry for the late notice. At Bay Trail, eighth graders have started their Washington DC trip to learn about the history and culture of the country. And for the last week of May, students have been participating in spirit days to raise awareness for mental health, and today's theme was getting cozy in pajamas. The International Club's last meeting featured fun games and activities in German, French, and Spanish. At Scribner, field trip season is in full swing. Students have had the opportunity to ride a historic boat on the Erie Canal, visit a local luthier, explore the Rochester Museum and Science Center, and will soon visit the Rochester Hall of Justice and Camp Stellamaris. At Cobles, the ninth annual Cobles Cares basketball game fundraiser was held. Boxes upon boxes of goods were donated to the Penfield food shelf, and money was donated to hearts of the homeless. Last Wednesday, one teacher at Cobles, Reed Sanchez, was recognized with the News8 Golden Apple Award. And last Friday, in recognition, recognition of Asian American Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Heritage Month, there were assemblies for students, where Dr. Kang, an assistant professor at the Eastman School of Music, and Ezra Shin, a student at Harley School, performed a series of songs from Korea, and the presentation included an introduction to three traditional Korean instruments and hands-on music activities, including following the beat to a K-pop song. And this Friday evening and Saturday afternoon, Cobles' new drama club will be performing the play Sideways Stories from Wayside School. At Indian Landing, the 17th anniversary celebration, 75th?
It wishes it was 17.
The 75th anniversary was awesome. I was there. It had so many cool aspects, like t-shirts that were freshly printed with a super unique design, gourmet cupcakes, tours of the building, and mural painting with a professional local artist. And at Harris Hill, first grade students incubated and hatched baby chicks in class. And students have gone on so many field trips recently, including the zoo, MCC Theater, Stone Tolland House, and even an in-house field trip called Camp Read-A-Lot, where fifth graders camp out and read throughout the day, which is my personal heaven. And the Arts Synesthesia Festival will happen tomorrow night. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Helen, can I ask, how do you learn, how did you learn that you have to be at Honors Convocation?
I walked in, and Ms. Sick was there, and she was like, oh, you're here early. I was like, what do you mean? I'm perfectly on time for the board meeting. The board meeting? No, honey, you're in convocations.
Have you talked to your parents yet? Have you let them know you're going?
I texted my dad.
Okay.
So.
All right.
Yeah. I may be back.
We were gonna send you down there to represent the board.
Yeah.
Knowing that your name's gonna be called. So enjoy the Honors Convocation. Thank you for everything.
Thank you. Have a great night.
No secrets at Penfield.
Thanks, Helen.
All right. Superintendent.
That's me. All right, so we actually, this is the meeting after the budget vote, so Dr. Driffl gets to take a break, and there's no budget presentations this evening. Don't worry, those will be coming again soon. But I just have a few updates. NHS induction happened this last week. We had 101 PHS students who were inducted into the National Honor Society for the spring ceremony. And outstanding senior, Lena Lepani, is, was named the Penfield Central School District Outstanding Senior. This is an award given out by the Monroe County Council of School Superintendents, and every high school has one outstanding senior. It's selected by the high school principal, a grade-level AP and counselor, and then it's an amazing award where they get to eat dinner with me and their parents. So really fascinating. But it was wonderful. It was actually, I would just point out, to give kudos to East High School, their culinary program hosted it. It's absolutely amazing, like, like five-star quality food. It was incredible. And the speaker, they always try to bring somebody who was an outstanding senior in a year past to speak when they can, and this year was great. It was a graduate from several years ago from Bosie's Two Trade Schools, and now he runs his own business and does remodeling, and probably handed out 50 cards that night, including to Dr. Putnam. So, but it was really cool to watch sort of how many things public school does to support students in all their, all their ventures after high school. We just saw, for those watching now, the board and district office was able to watch the New York State Seal of Bilingual Literacy Celebration. So congratulations to the 12 students that are listed here and in the agenda. It was a great opportunity for us to hear from the students and celebrate them and their hard work. This year was a pilot program of the New York State Seal of Bilingual Literacy, and just a lot of hands on deck to support these students who are really incredible in terms of bilingual students. And as mentioned by our student rep, our Golden Apple Award, it did go to Reed Sanchez. And the Golden Apple Award for being a great teacher, and there's a picture of Ms. Sanchez in her class. And also exciting, she was actually here a minute ago for the Seal of Bilingual Literacy, our ENL teacher, Kristy French, on being selected for a prestigious 10-month fellowship project, training teachers in teaching English in Mexico City. She is one of only 200 teachers selected by the US Department of State for the next school year English Language Fellow Program. So kudos to Ms. French and all that she does to support our ENL students here in Penfield and now beyond. Speaking of achievement, congratulations to Board Vice President, Kristen Harlan. Kristin Harley, on receiving her Level 1 Achievement Award from the New York State School Boards Association. Board members earn this recognition by attending workshops, trainings, and activities that expand their governance, knowledge, and skills. And thanks to the incredible Kathleen, I had it framed. So, you can now hang on to this and celebrate with your family your Level 1 achievement through New York State School Boards. Congratulations.
Can I put it in Charlton's man cave?
100% it should be, wherever you feel fit. We get a round of applause for Kristin.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And that concludes my reports.
Okay, so we are on change orders, 5A. May I please have a motion and a second that the change orders as described above be approved?
So moved.
Second.
Board members, questions or comments? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? May I please have a motion and a second that the Board of Education approve an amendment totaling $3,027.79 to the 2023-2024 budget as shown above, the amount submitted both as revenue and expenditure items, and express its gratitude to the donors for their generous support of Pennfield schools?
Almost.
Second.
All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Okay. Whereas in accordance to the recommendation of the school district's administration, the Board of Education wishes to recognize the Southeast Christian Academy as substantially equivalent based on a program review. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board approves and recognizes the Southeast Christian Academy as substantially equivalent. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Board members, questions or comments? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? We have policies for second read and approval. That is child abuse and maltreatment and workplace violence prevention policy statement. Did we have any?
No, no feedback.
Okay. May I please have a motion and a second that those policies that I just read be approved as presented? Excuse me.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Okay, the following are the vote results from the May 21, 2024 budget vote and election as certified by the inspectors of election. So, Proposition 1 is the 2024-25 school budget. Do I read the number? Do I read everything?
You have to read the numbers.
Would you like me to?
Kathleen?
I think we do.
Read everything? Do we read the numbers typically?
Sure.
There you go.
There were 2,046 yes votes and 710 no votes. Proposition number two was for school buses. We had 2,174 yes votes and 587 no votes. Proposition number three was the Capital Reserve Fund, and we had 2,065 yes votes and 704 no votes. Candidates Kristin Harley, Patrick Moriarty, and Meg, Megan Callan were elected to three-year terms commencing July 1, 2024, through June 30, excuse me, 2027. All right. There is no, is there any unfinished business? I don't have any. Does anyone else have anything? Or any new business? All right.
Just say that the annual meeting's tomorrow night.
Oh, that's right, the annual meeting is tomorrow night. It's at, is it, um?
It's at the Strathelenes.
Okay, thank you. Is anyone going?
I'm not going.
I'm not going. All right, thank you for representing. All right, the board will now enter into executive session. We have to motion in a second. No, it says before the motion. I believe, do we motion here or do we motion over there?
Kathleen, do they motion here or in exec session? I think they, do the motion vote to move into exec session?
I think we need a motion in a second.
Do we motion here or in there?
I think you can do it here.
Oh, okay, we can do it here. Can I have a motion and a second that the board move into executive session?
Second.
All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed?